I call to order the June 8, 2023 special meeting of the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86. We are meeting in the Hinsdale South Library. The time is 5:30. Please call roll.
Member Breeze Fun?
Here. Member James?
Here.
Member Akris?
Here.
Member Gallo?
Here.
Member Leventhal?
Here.
Member Walker?
Here.
Member Waters?
Here.
May I have a motion to adjourn to closed session for discussion of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in park recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint launch against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity; however, meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase. Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted in health in accordance with this Act. Five ILCS 120, QC1. So moved, Gallo, second, James. Please call roll.
Member James?
Aye.
Member Akris?
Aye.
Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Leventhal?
Aye.
Member Walker?
Aye.
Member Waters?
Aye.
Member Breeze Fun?
Aye.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session. The Board will take action following the close...the Board will not take action following the closed session as detailed on your agenda.
You have...
We have set an action agenda.
Just the regular consent agenda, yes.
Okay. The Board will take action following the closed session as detailed on our agenda. The Board will reconvene around 6:30. Thank you. The time is now 6:50 PM, and the Board will now reconvene to no concession of the June 8, 2023 special meeting. Please stand if you are able and join me in exciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board will now hear audience comments for up to a total of 45 minutes. Speakers will have three minutes to address the Board. Speakers who do not have the opportunity to address the Board during our first public participation agenda item will have the opportunity to offer their comments during the second public participation agenda item. We need to have that, though. We'd have the...oh! Oops!
Special meeting, that's my oops. I apologize.
I apologize.
We can amend it.
We can amend it.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add public comment to the end of the meeting.
If it's needed, we will. Okay? Board meetings are meetings of the Board held in public, not open forum town hall meetings. Board members will not engage the public during public comment. The Board will keep this in mind as we conduct our meetings, allowing the public to provide input at the time allotted on the agenda to ensure the multiple voices of the community inform Board deliberations. When the Board deliberates, it will be a time for the Board to listen and learn from each other, taking the public input into consideration, not a time to reengage with the public. The Board will consistently abide by our formal processes related to this issue so that all persons are treated fairly and equally. Our first speaker is Anya Roman.
Let me grab myself a timer.
There was a list of...
Oh!
Yeah.
I did public speaking and debate for two years, so it's kind of second nature.
If you hit the button, the green light will come on.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I'm Anya Roman, and I am a rising senior at Hinsdale Central. I wanted to offer a student perspective on the fate of AP European History. Now, as a disclaimer, I have not been approached by any staff members to do this, and all opinions shared tonight are my own. My role is not to criticize, but rather to urge the reconsideration of proposed curricular changes. I am troubled that these changes are being made with little input from students themselves, considering that no polls or surveys appear to have been sent out to the student body. Now, I took World History Honors as a freshman, AP European History as a sophomore, and AP US History as a junior. In my opinion, AP European History should be retained as a sophomore-level honors track course across both schools. It offers a fantastic introduction to a major component of history and to college-level coursework in an engaging environment. AP Euro truly ignited my own interest in history, and taking this class led me to realize that I want to continue studying the discipline beyond high school. But there's currently a movement to make AP Euro a senior elective. Let's break down the basic reasons for the proposed changes. Firstly, parity between Central and South. Now, I'm all for parity, but the all-or-nothing mentality of getting rid of Euro as a mainstream course only to replace it with AP World History is flawed. Why can't we have both? Let students take AP World as freshmen and Euro as sophomores. For me, taking World History before European History gave me a well-rounded perspective, and this allowed me to better understand interactions between countries of the world as well as the power dynamics that exist in the world today. Second is relatability. Diversity in curriculum is important, and we should have a wide variety of course offerings to appeal to every student and their perspectives. However, taking away the choice to take European History is contrary to these ideals. The metric by which we evaluate classes shouldn't only be relatability, because that assumes that students don't have the ability to understand anything that doesn't directly pertain to them. There is a fundamental misunderstanding here regarding why we learn history. The lessons learned from this class are universal in nature, and so are the skills. I urge you to keep the current course structure. Considering that AP US is a standard junior class, taking AP European History beforehand is the best way to give students context for the topics that they're learning about. We see discrepancies in students' abilities to keep up based on whether or not they had taken Euro the previous years, at least I can attest to my own AP US class. I urge the Board of Education to take a step back and to conduct a more thorough investigation of student opinions on these classes. We are the ones being affected at the end of the day, and we have a right to work alongside the adults. It would be a loss beyond words to demote this highly enriching class. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Anya.
My son wants to speak as well. He wants to stand next to me, is that okay? Do you want to take a seat here, or you want to stand? You want to take a seat? And, good evening. My name is Ang Nguyen. I am a resident Hinsdale. We bought our home in 2004. I've lived in 19 years. I'm a dad of two kids, ages 10 and 8. I also happen to be a Harvard-trained pediatric doctor and a biotech entrepreneur. And the reason why I am where I am today is because I grew up in DuPage County, but in fact, I grew up going to Stanford. And DEI was really important in Naperville back in the 1980s, over 40 years ago. And because of those DEI initiatives in Naperville, I'm a recipient of those dividends. And so, when I lived for almost 20 years in one of the affluent cities in the country, the top 100, living at number four in the state, and there's a shift in our perception of how inclusion is part of our fabric, I'm kind of shocked and disappointed because you know, how to be paid forward, right? And this is what's really, really sad to me, and I wanted to read this out. And so, today I stand before you to emphasize the critical importance of incorporating diversity, equity, and inclusion into our education systems. As our society becomes increasingly interconnected and diverse, it is imperative that schools take on the responsibility of nurturing a generation of students who understand, appreciate, and celebrate these principles. First and foremost, teaching diversity, equity, and inclusion fosters a more accepting and tolerant society. And by exposing students to a wide range of perspectives, cultures, and backgrounds, we enable them to develop empathy and respect for others. They learn to recognize the inherent value in diversity and to appreciate unique contributions that individuals from different walks of life bring to our collective human experience. In essence, we are building a foundation for a society that embraces its differences and rejects discrimination. Moreover, incorporating these principles into our educational systems prepares students for the realities of the modern world, a business case. An increasingly globalized society, individuals are bound to encounter people from diverse backgrounds in their personal and professional lives. And by teaching DEI, we equip our students with the essential skills needed to navigate a multicultural world. They develop the ability to communicate, effectively cross boundaries, collaborate, and solve complex problems. These are not only advantageous in the workplace, but overall contribute the overall harmony and cohesion of society. Teaching DEI, inclusion cultivates critical thinking and a broader perspective. And when students are exposed to diverse ideas, they learn to question assumptions, challenge biases, and engage in doctoral dialogue. And so, let us work together to ensure that our schools become bastions of diversity, equity, and inclusion, where every student feels valued and empowered and to make a difference in the world. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Zarbati.
Hi. Thank you all for all your hard work. I want to thank you for approving the position of the Director of Instructional Equity. I think this is always a tough issue for any organization. And Dr. Payne's recent report suggests the district personnel are taking the mandate to provide students with the support they need. They're taking it and they're making it work for the students and the staff, which is terrific. Dr. Payne talked about asking the children what they're proud of, and I think if you ask anybody what they're proud of, there might not be an immediate answer that comes to mind. But as she talked in her presentation, and she talked about champions, I felt that when these kids get through school and they look back at their school experience, these are the kids who are going to know they can be proud of their work. They know they were supported, and they know they achieved. They might not end up straight A's, but they're going to end up good students, and they've powered through. So I think it's terrific, as she described it. I didn't know the term PWI, but I did know that we could never say that all our students have the same style of learning, we couldn't say that they all have the same interests, they don't have the same family situations, they certainly don't have the same mental health characteristics, and they certainly don't have the same cultural backgrounds. So, we know that student engagement and achievement is very complex, and we couldn't profess as a district to support excellence if we don't seek the best ways to support our students. So this position and the team that works towards developing and improving the support model proves, in my mind, and I think in the minds of a lot of people, that the district is not willing for good to be good enough, but it's really willing to commit to excellence for each individual. I think, I mean, I think it is, as said, in our adult lives, we have a lot of circumstances where we could look back on a system or a situation and say, oh, if I had taken a step or if I had taken a different step, maybe there would have been a better outcome. And here, that's our work lives usually, but here, this position, the director and the team, they are the adults, and the students are relying on them to take those steps. So in the school system, we have a community that's benefiting from a team of adults who are committed to thinking about students and their outcomes. And the families in our district are able to rely on the commitment to success and excellence. So thank you for considering this position.
Our next speaker is Yvonne Muir.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on coming, but when I went to watch the meeting from home, there was no video link on the agenda, so I rushed right over here. I know it's live streaming, but if people go onto the agenda, they are not going to find the meeting. So perhaps we can make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Secondly, I know that you have discussed and decided to begin videotaping committee meetings, and I commend that, but there was no discussion about videotaping all special board meetings. Many can go right into executive session, but oftentimes, public commenters do come, so those meetings also should be recorded, so I would like that request respectfully. I did attend, however, the last meeting and listened to the students from South who had been denied access to the AP Chem and AP Computer Science. I was disgusted to hear that. This is a course, AP Chem, that this year at South has two sections that are very small, and there's no reason why there can't be two sections that are very small next year. Find the money, make it happen. Computer Science, I was horrified to hear students were being steered away from that course. That word should never be used. If a student comes to high school and has opportunities and wants to take a high-level class, it should be offered. Find a way to make it happen. AP Euro, as you all know, I have five, four graduates, all took AP Euro. It was a hard class. My kids went on to high-achieving colleges. Their courses there were hard, but all four of my kids said AP Euro was the one class that prepared them the best to do deep dives into all of these hard courses. So please do not eliminate it as a sophomore-level course. If there are sophomores ready, willing, and able to take it, let them take it. Open it up, let juniors and seniors take it. Don't just steer people away from it because it's a hard class. That's the vibe I'm getting. It's hard, let's get rid of it. Superintendent search. It's time to start talking about who's going to replace Dr. Covino in less than a month. Unless you guys announce today that Tan Prentice is coming back, you've got a very short window of time to publicly discuss, which you're required to do, how her role is going to be filled come July 1st. It's not on tonight's agenda unless superintendent search is what you're referencing. And finally, I'm going to remind, just going to go back to AP Euro. Three new board members at this table all said during one of the debates that they would keep AP European History as a sophomore-level course. Unless you're all going to break your promise to the voters who listened, attended your meetings, and then voted accordingly, you better vote to keep it as a sophomore-level course. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Walker.
All right, so before I step to the mic, in full disclosure, I'm Terry's husband. I rarely come to these meetings unless I feel a bit of incumbency, and I come about every 18 to 24 months.
Greg, will you turn on your...
Yes.
Thank you. Because we didn't hear, not everybody...
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to talk about DEI, but I'm going to weave it in with four other topics. Does the clock start or do I need to press? Okay. I'm going to talk about post-COVID superintendent trends, superintendent search process, D86 Board interrelationships, and support for IDEA, which means inclusion, diversity, equity, and access. Post-COVID, there's 13,500 superintendents across the country, but post-COVID, 3,500 of them retire. There's a 25% reduction in the breadth and depth of quality of superintendents that exists for us to pull from. But guess what how that impacts us? There is a negative 75% reduction in the number of applicants for superintendent jobs. If there are typically 20 applicants, it's now like five or six. If you're a premier district, you might have 30 applicants in a pre-COVID, now you may get eight. So we need to be aware of that in terms of our search process. Okay. Rhetorical questions. How many steps is it to basically hire a superintendent? How long should it take? Can anybody on the Board answer that? Probably not. I'll tell you. I did, it's an extensive research back in January, knowing this could potentially come up. It's a 10-month, typically 10-step process. I'll give you a handout that shows you that. And if we don't, if we have to hire an interim superintendent, there's typically a premium associated with that. You're talking about potentially a $500,000 cost associated with hiring an interim superintendent, legal fees, search fees, everything else. That means a lot of desk facilities and other things that we don't get if we protract this process. Okay. D86 Board interrelationships. I'm going to try and talk about, if you're a superintendent candidate, things that you typically don't like. You don't like board politicization, you don't like board polarization, you don't like board infighting, you don't like micromanagement, and you'd like boards that actually support IDEA, which is why I'm here to talk. There was one article I read, I read about 60 back in January, I don't know if you all know Clint Eastwood or Sergio Leon, but there was talk about there's a good, bad, and ugly. If you're a superintendent, you're going to do a search, and you're going to find out the ugly things that you don't like about how the board is interacting. The head of the New York School District quoted, a couple of years ago, talking about helicopter boards. He said, "Trust your professionals to make decisions that should be theirs to make." "School boards are full of former teachers and other individuals with various forms of specialized expertise, but having knowledge in a particular area doesn't give board members a license to micromanage." Last, he said, "If a school board member runs an auto repair shop, should he or she show up to a school bus garage and check the timing belts?" So to add some levity, we've got experts that are teachers and faculty members and department heads who are making decisions. You all have a tough job, and you're trying to be proactive, and the best districts across the country allow and empower the board to be proactive. But there's a fine line, or you want to call it a tight rope that you have to walk, and I encourage you to do that and do it proactively. Last thing, I don't have time, I run out of time, but there's New Trier and Stevenson are two of the best schools in the area. They're actually ranked right around us, nine or 10 in terms of performance, and they have some dynamic IDEA programs. So I'm going to hand you guys this, if you want it. If you don't, if you want to use this kitty litter, knock yourselves out. That's a copy, if you want to make copies. I'll wrap it up. I will hand this to my beautiful wife, and she can pass it down to you guys and anybody else who's sitting back there, and I'm going to call my son.
Our next speaker is Dr. Patricia Jones Blessman.
Press the button. My name is Dr. Patricia Jones Blessman, and this may be the first time that many of you have seen me. But first and foremost, I want you to know that I am a mom of a rising sophomore who attends Hinsdale South High School, and I am a godmother to three other male students who also attended Hinsdale South. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist with over 30 years of experience as a clinician and consultant. One of my specialty areas is in cultural competence and inclusion. I've consulted to educational institutions and business organizations around justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. As a new parent to this district, I was thrilled to see the teachers here at D86 so eloquently describe, detail, and parent support the need for an education that allows all students to see themselves within the historical timeline of human achievement. Their compelling arguments have already been documented and circulated. The path forward that they described is innovative and much needed. This team did exceptional work, and the Board would be remiss to ignore implementing their recommendations and maintaining the record of instructional equity position. Personally, my son has traveled to Europe, specifically Germany, France, and the Netherlands. He has traveled to Japan, China, and Thailand, to Cuba and Egypt, and hopefully, so will be traveling to England, Africa, and Brazil. In our travels, we have explored how different cultures provide place spaces for their children. Our children live in a world that is increasingly bringing them into contact with people from around the globe. Their education should include their perspectives, as well as prepare our young children as best as we can for the world that is coming, and quite frankly, the world that is already here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reed McCallum.
Hello, my name is Reed McCallum. I live in Hinsdale. I want to say I'm grateful to this Board for its sincere commitment to improving communication and transparency with the community. Those are sorely needed. Open discussion, asking hard questions, and aspiring for consensus are admirable, so I applaud the Board. I trust that this Board will put students and families first and vote to hire Dr. Payne's replacement as our Director of Instructional Equity. During Dr. Payne's annual presentation on the 11th, it was really clear how important it is for a director to lead this work. Dr. Payne said, "Equity is not a side conversation, but rather, it is fully integrated into all of our work." And it was incredible how true that is from her report. The DEI director works closely with the academic cabinet, the district curriculum leadership team, the MTSS leadership team, the Building Equity Action Team, the Culture and Equity Leadership Team, or SALT, and KeyTAC, and the Student Services Cabinet. Without a director to coordinate this vital work, student achievement would suffer, and achievement gaps would likely grow. And the harm it would do through the message it would send to students who do not feel seen or fully supported is immeasurable. Dr. Payne also outlined a goal for equity work to be more proactive and build on the base that MTSS interventions and professional development have laid. She spoke about a focus on belongingness, building classroom cultures, and making sure all students feel celebrated. It was inspiring and felt urgent. Students and families and staff are eager for this vision to be realized. I trust that all seven members of this Board will vote to replace Dr. Payne, because as a new board, to eliminate an established role of this importance that's so important in supporting students who need the most help within weeks of new sworn in would be reckless. It would fly in the face of concerns about the pace of change over the past few years that many community members have expressed. If any member of this Board had doubts about whether a director was needed, I struggle to imagine why that board member would not have asked Dr. Payne during her presentation on the 11th to weigh in on that idea during the 25 minutes of Q&amp;A that followed her report. For all of these reasons, I'm confident that this Board will vote to hire Dr. Payne's replacement after an open and transparent conversation tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Burke.
Hi, thank you all for your service. I have limited time and a lot of issues. Yes, of course, we need a district-wide Director of Equity and Inclusion. In case it could be argued that building-level staff working on equity would be sufficient, it's a very good idea, but it does not replace a person coordinating all of these activities. And over the past few years, we've heard so many students and parents and board members speak eloquently about why this role is so important, and we're hearing very eloquent voices tonight. I will now bring up an issue of equity that seems to unite the political spectrum. The oddest of political bedfellows all agree on this. We really should not be shutting anyone out of a basic 10th-grade academic requirement, maybe naveling AP Chem at all. We knew that demand was right at the cusp of needing a second section from the start. We should open a second section, and I was appalled that the solution in, you know, quote-unquote "was raised," that maybe people will just drop out of AP Chem at South. Hello, how often do we have it as a... Hello, how often do we have it as a goal that people will quit AP Chem? No, we need to open a second section, or get a waiver so that three kids can work at one station. In other words, a waiver so that the section could be bigger. And we also, for smaller elective classes, I will not give up on creative solutions. I never gave up on the circus, that must have taken a decade or more. We are talking about electives that have a high symbolic importance, but advanced and motivated students, so creative solutions would work. It would not be like learning during a pandemic from, you know, alienation and isolation. Students would go to a certain designated place in the school and hold one Zoom class per day, for example, in certain elective courses. And we hear the issue raised that sometimes central students are short-changed by the present system. Well, that's true, but it doesn't happen nearly as often. And since when do two wrongs make a right? Are we now running on the principle that two wrongs make a right? And finally, let's bring in AP African-American history. If there's the greatest story not still fully told, that is the ideal history course, huge in significance, narrow enough in focus to go in depth. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Allison Peters.
Good evening, I'm Allison Peters. I'm a D-86 parent, and I'm here tonight to read a letter that was written on behalf of my friend, my fellow D-86 parent, and my colleague at College Bound Consulting, Molly Hughes, who is unable to be here tonight. Dear D-86 Board, I'm writing as an alum of Hinsdale Central, a Hinsdale Central parent, 2019 graduate, current 2025 student, and as an independent college consultant who works with students from high schools across the state and country. I am deeply concerned about the proposed new social studies curriculum changes, changes that were rushed to approval without a thorough, careful vetting by all stakeholders. I implore you to please keep AP Euro as a Grade X offering and World History Honors as a Grade IX offering. I also ask that you keep honors philosophy and expand this offering to Hinsdale South. Since 2010, I've worked one-on-one with hundreds of students across dozens of high schools in the United States, from public and parochial to boarding. I advise many high achievers attending Hinsdale Central who choose to pursue a rigorous social studies path. Often, they end up in World History Honors freshman year because they know that they will like it and have done well in middle school social studies and history. Occasionally, it's because they already truly love history. Still, many of them ask for my professional opinion about the relative importance of this path. They seek confirmation that taking such a path is worth it. More specifically, when deciding on sophomore classes, many ask me about whether they should take AP Euro. Meanwhile, they rarely ask if taking the most rigorous math path is worthwhile. Why is that? After thirteen years as a college consultant, I'm confident that it's because the college admissions landscape is ever-present in their minds, and because admissions is more arbitrary and confusing than ever. The one thing students feel they can most control is their transcript. The goal of earning As across all subjects at any cost, including their health or their long-term educational goals, seems to be the only standard that they can grasp onto when choosing courses. There is also a misconception that selective colleges prefer STEM rigor above all else. The reality is more nuanced than that, and my job is to offer perspective with their long-term goals and development in mind. So when a student asks, "Should I really take AP Euro?", I hear it so hard. I confirm their suspicion. I say that indeed, it is rigorous, but I encourage them to embrace the challenge. I explain that assuming school counselor and teachers have recommended AP Euro as a good next course for them, earning a B in AP Euro is an achievement to be proud of, and that college admissions know and highly value the rigor of this path. I also tell them that countless students I've worked with, upon reflection, say taking AP Euro was among the best academic decisions they made in high school. What they don't yet realize at this juncture in their young lives are the other important reasons for my guidance toward this class. She goes on to give four excellent points that I'm going to run out of time to read tonight, but I'm going to encourage her to email this to all of you, and I will leave her letter here for those of you to read it. Thank you for your time and consideration, and have a good night. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz Lippa.
Hello, it's nice to see all of you. My name is Liz Lippa, and I'm a resident of Darian and a member of the CAS D-63 School Board. I'd like to begin by thanking every one of you for the service to our students in the district. We know that you work very long hours, very, for this unpaid position, and I deeply appreciate it. I'm here today to advocate for the Social Studies Alignment Team's recommendations in filling the Director of Equity and Inclusion position. First, a little background for those who may be new to school boards. To be effective, a board must clearly understand its role versus that of school-based staff. The Illinois Association of School Boards explains that an effective board of education governs a school district and focuses on core values, mission, vision, and goals, while the superintendent and district staff manage the schools, setting objectives, action plans, and procedures. When high-achieving teachers present a well-researched, data-based plan to alter the social studies curriculum sequence, the board should govern by asking good questions, doing research, approving said curriculum, and ensuring that students meet academic goals. As member Gallo stated, "A board should trust and then verify. Trust the teachers to make good curricular decisions and verify that the changes yield positive academic results." And the Social Studies Alignment Team said, "We would also like to express with sincerity the deletr- I knew I was gonna do this, deleterious effect to morale that certain changes will have on many staff members who spent countless hours on the alignment plan and its implementation. Trust our teachers." Study after study shows that ensuring all students belong and feel respected for their individuality yields academic gains. A major concern for this community is the high percentage of Black, Latino, and low-income students in the district who are struggling academically. Progress was made under Dr. Payne, and our students need and deserve the continued support that a Director of Equity and Inclusion provides across the district. The board should support the Social Study Team's recommendations and fill the Director of Equity and Inclusion position. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Ochsenslager.
I am Kimberly Ochsenslager, a thirty-one-year resident of Hinsdale, a master's-degreed social studies teacher, and was a banking executive in the U.S., London, and Hong Kong. My comments tonight are based on attending most D-86 school board meetings for about two years. I'm representing myself tonight, but I do believe I am a member of a less overtly vocal contingent of our community that has significant concerns about the tenure and the narrow vision of this board. With all due respect, the former board, while some may have disagreed with decisions, was a legal, democratically-elected entity. Their votes over the past years do not warrant nullification. As a community member, that is why I do not understand the following. Why is D-86 spending what will likely be significant time and funds for legal services to hasten the departure of the superintendent when the former board voted democratically to provide us with a perfectly reasonable off-ramp for that departure? If this board's pursuit of an alternative outcome continues, I will want to have a full accounting of what was not provided to students from all those fees spent. I will be anxious to know, because your campaign pledges repeatedly demanded that this is essential for full transparency. Hard as I try, I cannot discern any business or pedagogical case to be made from this needless action. And how can this board not endorse an energetic vision for our school district that embraces well-researched best practices for the social studies curriculum, that emphasizes rigorous, critical skills development within every grade level? Paired with dynamic sequencing of courses that will prepare our entire student body for the global world, they will be in earning. Regrettably, I am only hearing how we have always done things in the past, as well as a cudgel of repeatedly using the word "data" to satisfy personal but often errant conclusions. We are indeed looked upon as a community of dynamic individuals, families, and schools. That should be our reputation and our mission to maintain. If you remain mired in relitigating thoughtful prior decisions by faculty, teams of professionals, and boards, I believe D-86 will be left behind other schools we benchmark in our national cohort. So finally, in the next election, will the next board nullify your efforts? It certainly could. I do not believe this is what you want the legacy of D-86 to be, one that flip-flops, is disruptive to students' progress, and one that has potential to disadvantage our students as they go forward to meet the challenges of this complex but fascinating world they will inherit. This board's current impending actions do not bode well for our promising investment in our kids' futures or our community. Let's move on. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Jim Havlin.
Good evening, everybody. I have a house in Hinsdale, and I also have a house in Pennsylvania, so I don't describe as a part-time resident. I have two daughters who graduated from Central. My observation, and I won't take three minutes, I don't think, is that DEI is very controversial. It's controversial in the country, it's controversial in Illinois, and it's controversial in D-86. You wouldn't know it, listening to the twenty people here tonight, but it's very controversial. Dr. Prentice was controversial. She's not the superintendent anymore because she was controversial. So please don't go away with the idea that there's overwhelming support for DEI. There is support. I wouldn't call it overwhelming. I don't know if it's fifty-fifty, sixty-forty, but I do know that people in the community who are not happy with it, who view it as having left to spend, who view it as excessive militant, who view it as associated with the Democratic Party and not the other half of the country, don't feel this is transparent. And I do think you ought to pause, hire a superintendent, see what they think, and then move forward. That's my view. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Kim Mottola.
Last meeting, I talked about social studies, so I'm gonna go for something different. I'm thrilled this board created the Academic Committee, and the board's commitment to a rigorous curriculum adoption process is starting in the Policy Committee as how we implement changes. We used to have a three-year curriculum adoption process, and I think that that's really, really important. It's important to have different places for the community to engage. With the Academic Committee, you can help Mr. Markey understand where D-86 are and where we work, and where we could be, and how we can do it together. The teachers created an alignment plan under Bruce Law in January of 2019. Why did the administration abandon the teachers' plan? Students in D-86, especially at Hinsdale South, showed unprecedented growth when we had G and A R classics. Why did admin eliminate the courses that resulted in that success? And why didn't admin alter the course as proficiency has continued to fall? Lots of discussion has resulted from the South students who made public comments at the last meeting. After several of them spoke, I looked at the data. At the HR staffing meeting, to maintain flat staffing, admin showed what courses are not running due to low enrollment. Why didn't admin explain why a 3% decrease in population resulted in a 10% drop in FTE in science? Where are those teachers being reallocated? Looking at the master schedule, D-86 have removed teachers from classrooms to fill roles as department chairs, assistant department chairs, interventionists, literacy lab, and a number of teachers hold other administrative positions that aren't actually even explained. The number of students in special ed courses have grown exponentially. What's the impact of MTSS, which doesn't even show up on the master schedule, have, and the other support programs? Where are those resources being taken from in order to provide resources in another place? During the Policy Committee meeting, Priskovino and Deb Kudrowski reported they are finalizing the building procedure manual, which will establish what the procedures are for registration. Hopefully, that will resolve some of the problems kids have with scheduling so that they know what has happened and what their recourse is. Overall, I feel like D-86 has been derailed since Kami Prentice took the helm, actually since she came to the district. Since Prentice advocated for the elimination of tracks, student proficiency has fallen, and more students graduate without independence that they need to succeed post-secondary. You're doing great things. Much needs to be accomplished before the regular cadence of adopting the program of studies, so I hope the Academic Committee and this board will move forward on academic changes and slow the roll.
Andrew, before we move on, I did want to propose an additional agenda item tonight to discuss the proposal for Point Two or Point Four FTE to allow the students at South to have an additional section of AP Chem. And discussions surrounding it.
One small point, word of Mr. Waters, I am actually meeting with the parents tomorrow afternoon to discuss this, and I wonder if it might be more appropriate to finalize that conversation with them prior to any board discussion or action.
I do want a second, so Board Member Waters, I'd like to consider, so if we can just keep across that conversation so that we can make this a priority conversation. Thank you.
Are you comfortable with that, Jeff? So Dr. Kovino will summarize and list all the...
I just wanted to mention that at the table.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Moving on, Board Business. Five point one, the National Superintendent Search. Assistant Superintendent and Human Resources Sher Moore has presented the board with an overview of the superintendent search process for the board's discussion. Has everybody had a chance to look at Ms. Moore's document? Okay. At this point, I would like to ask respectfully and humbly that Member Walker and Member Gallo work together with Ms. Moore on streamlining the process and then bringing everything back to the board. Is that agreeable?
On the other board, Carrie? Yep. Okay.
Fantastic.
Sounds good.
Are there any other points of discussions or questions? No? Okay. Moving on, Strategic Plan Review. Dr. Kovino, can you start?
Sure. Behind me, on the right, is a visual of the work that was created, I believe, in 2019, and comes to fruition, not comes to fruition, was designed as a five-year plan at that point in time. Believe it or not, we are through five years of, or we are at the five-year mark where we should be thinking about what the next steps are for the district strategic plan. When we were talking about this agenda item, my thought was just to sort of provide a general overview of what districts typically do at this point in time, so the board could have a discussion about the direction that it would like to go, and potentially entertain questions about where we are with the process. The board knows that it received a Goal Three, Four, and Five update at the, I don't know if it was the last meeting, I'm losing track of the meetings. It was at a very recent meeting, and at the next meeting, the next scheduled meeting, June 22nd, will receive an update from Goal One from me and Goal Two from Dr. Carrie Smith, who is the gold champion there, as well as some thoughts, comments about the plans from building-level administrators as well. So when a strategic plan comes to a conclusion, the board has to make a decision about how it wants to carry forward, knowing that this is the point in time when community input is typically sought once again, as it was at the beginning of the strategic plan process. I'm fortunate enough to be part of this process in a district that I am moving to shortly, and also in my own children's district, so I have some... and also in my own children's district, so I have some notion about how this renewal exists currently, right now, from those two personal perspectives. But in general, the board probably needs to begin having a discussion about how it would like to proceed with discussions related to renewing, revising, rethinking, and recommunicating whatever the strategic plan might look like in the near future. Typically, this is a process that is conducted jointly with a superintendent and the board, and so that will be part of the discussion as well. But it is always a process that involves as many stakeholders as possible. Through surveys, which I know we have some trouble with, through focus groups, through a number of scheduled meetings, through a lot of comments, and ways for the community to be involved. Typically, the board and/or the administration work together to think through if the five areas are still the most pertinent areas of focus, right? And then invite the community in to think about how those five areas should be shaped, and how new goals either are created or goals are revised based on what they currently are, as listed here. The one step that our district took at the creation of this strategic plan that is slightly different than what some other districts do is it also outlined these critical, or these competencies under defining excellence that are very hard to read and have a lot of words, right? But did a lot to provide focus for each of the goal areas related to things like, and this is just, I'll speak for my area, curriculum alignment. While Goal 1 doesn't say you do align curriculum, the areas under coherent systems, critical competencies, innovative teaching and learning practices, those words, if you could read them, and I think they're linked potentially for you to see here in almost every document that we put out, in every major document, do speak directly to those ideas, which came directly out of community feedback about creating a single program of studies and having options for every kid, those types of things. So anyway, for the board's conversation, these are the items that you'll probably need to be talking about in the very near future related to the strategic plan. And as we think through the work of each goal area, specifically Goal 1 with curriculum alignment, where we seem to have a lot of conversations, but I don't enjoy sitting at that end of the table and presenting and taking questions, right? But it will probably behoove the group and the community to be thinking through what that actually means, those, you know, and again, working through the language, whether or not we're going to keep it or not, related to what each goal, kind of the underlying competencies underneath each one. So that's a general overview, and I don't, that's all.
With regards to the five goals in the strategic plan, with some board discussion and approval, there are very clear board committees that associate with each goal, and I would ask that the board committees consider the goal that is associated with their work. So Goal 1 would be academic committee, solely academic committee, in my opinion, but with discussion back to the board...
I just want to confirm something, though. We're actually going into the fifth year. Am I correct? So while it was drafted five years ago, we're going into the fifth year of implementation of a five-year plan, knowing that at the end of the fifth year, we will be having a new superintendent. So I guess, I would think that it would make sense, plus we're also going to be launching a national search, which is going to include a lot of feedback from the community that is potentially not going to substitute from having that same focus group type of format for a strategic plan, but it's going to potentially help us inform what kind of strategic plan, when, et cetera. But I would say that we finish out the strategic plan over the next year, week for a new superintendent, and then embark with that leadership on the process again.
The only thing is that part of, in terms of curriculum, there are many areas that report 100% complete, and I think it would behoove the district to evaluate the data coming out from the departments that are reporting 100% complete.
That could be part of this next school year.
So, Dr. Covino, in the development of this plan, and I don't think you were here, but when this strategic plan was developed, did the district work with a...
Consulting firm.
Did the district work with a consulting firm, or how was that put together?
Yeah, it's not typical for a district to contract with a consulting firm about strategic planning, or an individual who guides the process and advises the board and the administration about the pieces, and sometimes even facilitates some of the meetings. So there is a genuine feeling of an unbiased person who is, like, taking everyone's thoughts into consideration. So that is an option. And the only comment that I would make about Member Leventhal's, which I think is a very thoughtful plan to, is that many of your superintendent candidates will be looking at that plan when they begin to apply for jobs, regardless of how Member Walker and Gallo conducted. This will be something that everyone will be looking at. So just keeping in mind that that will be the public-facing document still for the next year in its present format.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that I agree, finishing this plan out and, you know, waiting until we have a new person in place, I think, makes the most sense in terms of establishing a future plan.
That's actually what I want to ask you, Dr. Covino. Does that make, is that with your recommendation that we wait till this year of plan lays out, and then, would you recommend that?
Given the fluctuation in the district leadership right now, and I'm saying that with as much vagueness as possible, you really want to have a firm leadership structure in place before you go through the process of renewing. In a typical structure, in the final year, you would begin having those conversations at least somewhere within that year, so that by the year after it's done, you have something to move to. But there is also the idea that you continue on with the work, you know, in all of the areas, and just discuss them, as maybe President Greenspan suggested, in the committees that bear them the most responsibility.
Yeah, I do have, I do have one comment on that, because I do want to be sensitive to, you know, the strategic plan was put in place and then it was implemented with a certain vision, and we have had a lot of pushback from the community on certain aspects of the plan, and I do think that we need to recognize that, and that as a board, not a committee, as a board of seven, especially under Goal 1, we should have a discussion about the direction. So we do set the direction, but this board needs to set the direction and the expectation as a board of seven, so that we're sending a very clear and consistent message as this final year rolls out. So while I appreciate the work of the committees, there's certain work that should come before the full board, and I believe that that is one discussion that should come to the full board of seven as soon as possible.
And I would, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would agree with your point, Ms. Greenspan, about, a lot of things have been checked off and said done, and we need to reflect and look back, and look at, our teachers have been sweeping with a broom in front of them and sweeping with a broom behind them. They've been, I believe they've been very busy in these past five years, and I think giving them a little bit of grace of, this is, we're done, we're, you've checked the box off, now let's look back and reflect. Where are we with that? How did that, how is it working out? I would love to do that, and I also expect that because leadership is in flux, that we take this year to finalize the strategic plan, reflect, and allow the new superintendent, who will be coming in in '24, the space, and the board will be creating maybe some goals to be looking at at that point in time.
And also, sorry, there are several, there were several areas that were delayed over the past couple of years, so we have some courses specifically that are not rolling out until the '24, '25, '26 school years. So with respect to the goals, Dr. Covino, which goals are complete, almost complete, if you looked at them, please? We have five. So I mean, we've received comprehensive reports, so...
Wing it.
Goals 3, 4, and 5 are the closest to, the word completion, I struggle with, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that word, but...
Or aberrance.
Yeah, yeah. Continuous improvement is important, but Goals 3, 4, and 5 are the easiest to quantify as being the furthest, as closest to achieving the goals ever set for them. Goal 2, while a lot of work has been done, a vast majority of it was also wrapped up in student schedules, and while we made a, some changes based in the ratified contract for changing periods, there is actually, inside that contract, ongoing conversation about the potential for teacher supervision, how that might change the day, so I would say that that one is also in flux and probably falls closer to the, I would not use the word completion there, but is, again, in progress. Goal 1 is the one that is probably the largest of all the goals, the most, not largest, the most ambitious of all of the goals, because it touches every single course in the entire school district. And while a great deal of progress has been made, and if we can count this, my Goal 1 update, and we take it off the next agenda, that would be terrific. But there has been a great deal of work done. The teachers have done a tremendous job. To your point, when they asked us to pause, we paused in a number of areas, and that's why, even though it ends next year, there are still, there's still work planned over the course of the next two to two and a half years. So that would be an area where we would have the most ongoing work.
So with regards to Goal 3, 4, and 5, it's closer to completion, however we discover, right? Goal 3 is HR, so it would be, I'm wondering if HR can revisit with Cheryl to make sure where the work is, if there are any areas that we need to look at and the board needs to hear about, like reflections. Goal 4 doesn't really have a board committee, it's family and community connections, and I believe Member Waters, it would be great in maybe leading a group to examine Goal 4, family and community connections, right? And communication, surveys, any of that piece. Are you comfortable with that?
Quite comfortable, yes.
Perfect. Goal 5 is resources.
Finance.
It's finance, for the most part?
CFO Stevenson presented a pretty complete report at the last meeting about where everything is, and...
Will you look at that, if there's anything you need to bring back to the board, will you? Perfect.
And facilities, possibly, for...
Yeah. It'll work together. Yeah. Any more discussion on strategic plan? Moving on. 5.3, the social studies program team provided a mess, oh, so let's have the discussion with social studies with possible action. Member Leventhal, would you like to start?
Sure, I would like to start by reading from a letter that we received that Allison Peters began reading, so I'm going to continue where she left off, and then I have some comments of my own. Just to refresh, she wrote a letter to, and the full board did receive it, and she left off that "What they don't yet realize at this juncture in their young lives are the other important reasons for my guidance towards this class. Specifically, it is one of the courses in District 86 that most prepares students for the demands of academics at the selected colleges they hope to attend. I believe others, especially Chris Freyler, have expanded on the following point. AP Euro is exceptionally efficient in expanding students' curiosity and critical thinking skills, and 10th grade is the ideal time for such growth. Since my job as college counselor is to help guide them to the best preparation for success in college, for those students prepared to take this course, I therefore recommend it highly. AP Euro is a proven winner. Look at the scores our students earn on the AP test and what they go on to achieve in APUSH, AP LAME, et cetera. This course, because of its rigor and content, is foundational to their success in other AP courses. It is, in my professional experience, by far the most cited confidence-building course that rising District 86 seniors reflect upon when deciding where to apply to college. When a student asks me if they can handle the rigor of a very selective university or strong analytic and writing skills are required, I often say that if they did well in AP Euro, they are prepared academically for any rigorous college path with humanities' core requirements, and those schools are many. This is as true for future physics majors as it is for history majors. I have never had a student regret taking AP Euro. Other classes are more of a mixed bag when students reflect on them. It is, simply put, a student favorite for those who take it. Another reason to support this sequence is that it makes sense to take AP Euro before taking AP US History. AP Euro lays the foundation for a better understanding of AP US. I won't elaborate on this point, as many others have made it. AP Modern World History is not equivalent, as it is essentially a survey course. There is the old adage, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," and applies well here. Please evaluate the suggested impact versus what we are throwing out." And I'll skip down to the final paragraph of the letter. Finally, "Let me take this opportunity to opine that HONOR'S Philosophy is an outstanding offering that launches students into college with deep curiosity and intellectual generosity. There is too little intellectual generosity today in college and beyond. It is a gift to those students who take it. Current students who hear it is going away are clamoring to take it before it disappears. I received a call about this issue three days ago. I also know current college students and recent graduates who claimed it helped them choose their college courses more thoughtfully than they would have otherwise. What can justify taking this course, another proven winner away? Why not try offering it to Hinsdale South so that those students can access this educational gem as well?" So I'll leave off there. I did want to, we have received a few comments, I want to make it clear that AP European History in the Program of Studies is available to 10th graders, but it is also already available as an elective course to 11th and 12th graders, and that is outlined in the current Program of Studies, which is a unified program of studies for both campuses next year. I also want to provide some context about some other information that we've received. HONOR'S Philosophy is a course that's historically been taught at Central, but there was a philosophy and ethics course taught at Hinsdale South, and it went away because of low enrollment. So it isn't that there wasn't ever a course there, and there's only been a course here. And then there was another claim that perhaps, you know, these courses were started and spearheaded, you know, by one teacher. Well, that's how a lot of new courses start. In fact, we received an incredibly thoughtful email from Noel Lawrence this year, this week, about how he spearheaded bringing African-American history to this district, and successfully did so, and that still runs with multiple sessions at Hinsdale Central each and every year. So I have a lot of other comments to make, but I'll turn it over to other board members.
I think in the same way, we also got comments in our email inbox called, "Team Member, supporting AP World History." I took the time to compare both of the courses. From my expertise and looking at both comparison, the conversation of less rigor or more rigor is, from AP's website themselves, if you actually take the time to compare the two courses, the skills that are being supported are exactly the same. So the conversation of the fact that AP World History is less rigorous, I have not seen the evidence for that at this time in terms of actual rigor and content skills. According to AP's site themselves, AP European History skills are evaluating priority/secondary sources, analyzing the claims, evidence, and reasoning, using blinded sources, putting historical developments in context, and making connections between them, coming up with claims that are thesis and explaining and supporting it in writing, and they are the exact same skills that are expected for students in AP World History. So I just want to make sure that that is clear, that they are on the same level of rigor. The difference is in terms of the content. That's what I just wanted to make sure that we are all in agreement, that the skills and the rigor of these two courses are exactly the same. It's the con... It's the content that differs. And I would even go further that the content of the world history creates an interconnection of this of global societies that we know is a mandate. And then we saw the report coming in from the team that actually did the research funding the Illinois State Standards for Social Sciences. So I do think those are very valid claims in terms of the alignment. That social studies team is brought to our attention.
So those skills are the same across AP Modern World, AP Euro, and then even AP, AP US History. However, AP Modern is known to be a very fast course and more broad in scope, whereas AP European History allows the opportunity to dig deeper into content. It was also mentioned or brought to this board at the last meeting that some of those global connections are incorporated into AP European History. We were provided multiple units that are used in the courses now to provide those connections.
So I guess one thing that I would say is, um, I'm a little, I, I thought the memo that the teacher sent to us was, was very, explained everything that they had already told us. I do find it a little curious that they're not here tonight, that we're debating this, but they aren't here to answer questions, specific questions. I presume that Dr. Covino could answer questions for us.
Both of our department chairs with social studies are in the audience.
Okay.
But no, we did not invite teachers at this time.
And I, I guess my position on this, or my, my feeling is, and I said this at the last meeting, based upon the information that was provided to us and the information that's been during their presentation, as well as what's been sent subsequently, it seems to me that the recommendations that they're making was well thought out and should stand as it has been approved previously. Now, if there is an opportunity for us to offer both courses at the sophomore level, perhaps we can consider that. But I also think we need to look at the numbers. And as I recall, in looking at the information, the number of students who are requesting to take this course as sophomores has been declining over the years.
So there's a social studies requirement in ninth grade, and there's a social studies requirement in 11th grade. There is no social studies requirement in 10th grade. And there's been no evidence brought to this board to suggest that those numbers won't still decline for 10th grade because there isn't a 10th grade social studies requirement. There's a graduation civics requirement that a lot of students choose to fulfill during their sophomore year. But there's been no evidence to suggest that AP Modern World is going to pull in more numbers than AP European History does at the honors level sophomore year. In fact, in 2000, I think it was 15, when civics, the civics requirement came to be in Illinois, this board stated, or the social studies department stated, even though social studies has only a two-year requirement, the majority of students take more than two years. Social studies electives at the 10th and 12th grades will be impacted the most by this change in required courses, referring to civics. So there was an expectation already that there was going to be a decline potentially in enrollment in 10th and 12th grade. Now, at Hinsdale South, the numbers don't seem to suggest that there really is a fall off from their freshman honors course to their sophomore honors course. However, there's been nothing to suggest that AP Modern World sophomore year is going to improve that participation at the honors level.
But there's also nothing that states if I don't take AP Euro as a sophomore, you can still take AP US History as a junior. I know this as a fact.
Absolutely.
Because it's what happened in my own household. So.
And a lot of kids do that. And that's why it jumps back up for junior year. And, and the quote by G K Chesterton has now been referenced a few times at the board table, most recently at the last meeting about the social studies curriculum and board member requests for discussion and possible action. The quote, "Don't ever take a fence down until you know the reason it was put up." It's a principle about understanding a current situation before implementing change. In this case, the fence is not the curriculum proposal approved in the fall of 2021, in my opinion, but instead the time-tested, successful curriculum that is already in place. As this letter went on, I believe this was the person that, Ms. Hughes was the one that used the phrase, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." We don't have a broken system as near as I can tell, and we have a pretty successful system at both schools. And I'm unclear why we're upending a decades-long curriculum that is successful and well-taught and well-respected.
I, I thought the teacher, it stated why. I mean, we, we are given four reasons. We're told that the persistence of low enrollment, right?
But no guarantee, no guarantee that that enrollment is going to go up. So do we.
But then there is an issue, though. There is a concern that we have low enrollment, lack of alignment to course offerings, the continuous lack of compliance with Illinois social study geography standards, and an ongoing inability to offer ones in social. I mean, they stated the four reasons. So I think it's unfair to say that there isn't. Hold on, I can just finish. And then finally is that I want us to just bring back to our attention that in this letter, this has been three years of work, not three days, not three weeks, not three months, three years of a group of professionals across the district who have come together and who have made the presentation. So I find it a little concerning that three years of work, to me, I value that. And I value the recommendation that's been committed. I appreciate that we are debating the conversation and in lieu of that conversation, if we're going to continue that course, I'd like to just answer them, if we're continuing that course, how are we addressing those four concerns? I can appreciate saying, let's keep AP Euro, all right? Then how are we addressing the four concerns that the team has come up with? Because I don't, not hearing those concerns at that.
So I would like to back up. Following our March meeting, when the social studies presented all of their final findings, I had to ask, how are we going to, one of the key parts of this process is sustainability. And as part of that sustainability, I asked how many, what are the percentage of students that take two years, three years, and four years of social studies? And it's, it's pretty telling. So when you ask why is there a big drop in students that are taking AP Euro or whatever is a sophomore year, there are only 38% students at Hinsdale South taking four years of social studies and 65% at Hinsdale Central. 28% are taking three years, 18% at Hinsdale South, or I'm sorry, 48% at Hinsdale South, 18% at Hinsdale Central. And then 20% of the students at Hinsdale South are only taking two years of social studies. So with those 20 courses that were being proposed, I'm not sure how that sustainability is going to happen. And I'm not sure that the numbers were actually analyzed when they were going through and looking at this. So my recommendation and what I would like to, to ask is, we've started to take steps in the policy committee. It's mentioned that this is three years worth of work, three years worth of work that did not come to the board at any point along the process for touch points. And so we've started to take steps in that policy committee to look at the administrative procedure and to add some of those touch points back in. My recommendation is to have a motion to pause the curriculum development for a short period of time while the academic committee has a chance to weigh in and we can start looking at some of the back and forth.
But I don't think that's quite accurate because I do believe that the social studies department came to a meeting in March of 2021, 2022, at some point and presented.
Fall of 2021, yeah.
At a very high level.
They presented it at a high level with four slides when we approved, when we were gearing up to approve the Program of Studies in the fall of 2021.
And that's not including Dr. Covino's updates on goal one? There's been, in three years of work.
No, there was no, there was no detailed update on, on the social study. No, there was no update on the social studies curriculum work, other than a percentage of how much work had been completed. There was no update brought to this board until I asked for an update last October, which was eventually brought in March. And the, and the update was to answer the questions that I had about what was moving forward. So this, the prior board was asked to approve this after a four-slide presentation with very little detail, if any, other than a broad outline, and then snuck into the Program of Studies. And I'll take the word snuck out, okay? But I've had a problem with the process for curriculum adoption since before I got seated on this board. And we've seen a lot of claims that, you know, well, we should listen to the teachers and they worked on this. Should we listen to the teachers or should we listen to the six teachers? So the whole department did not have a broad discussion about this or ample opportunity. We learned that at the last meeting, that while they may have had an opportunity to provide feedback, that a feedback was dismissed and not incorporated into a final plan. It wasn't incorporated into fine tuning the plan, and it certainly didn't come to the board for any refinement. In fact, one of the questions that I had asked at that meeting in the fall of 2021 was, philosophy honors is going away instead of being, you know, moved and implemented itself. And the answer was, well, you know, this is preliminary. There's always room for change. And as we've seen, that change hasn't come. So I appreciate member James's recommendation for a motion. The motion that I would make is that this gets reversed at this time pending.
In terms of just a couple things to add to it, Board Member Leventhal said, I went back and I watched the 21 meeting again. And it was indeed a four, you know, four-slide presentation. And at one point, I think the term was, you know, mentioned that it was a work in progress. And so it was certainly not a robust presentation of what was, what was, you know, to transpire. As far as, as far as the persistence of low enrollment, you know, Board Member James mentioned a couple of different things. I would also offer and remind community members who were here last week, certainly the board and the administrators were here for the last board meeting, we heard from several students of South as it relates to the A-CAM piece. We also heard some of those students maintain that they were steered in different directions or steered away from certain courses. That same narrative, which most of you should be familiar with, was presented at this board table by community members, emails to the board, public comment about being steered away from certain courses after physics first and VCP became a dual sequence. So frankly, and to be harsh in some people's estimation, but in my estimation honest, I don't necessarily trust administrative directive to counselors when it tends to play out that students are being steered away from particular courses. We heard it about science two weeks ago, and we heard a lot about it. I'm sorry, we heard it about science prior. We heard about AP Chem specifically most recently. So I do believe that the persistence of low enrollment is perhaps being manipulated by administrations, demands of staff.
Can I just, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I, no, I actually do agree, if the motion is to reverse the decision, I'm going to again ask them, how do we propose? Because if you reverse the decision, then you're proposing that reversal is solving the four issues that the social studies team. So I'm not sure that that reversal will solve issues.
So the low enrollment, we have, we have nothing, no data collected to indicate that changing out the sophomore honors course is going to improve low enrollment. In terms of enrollment in other social studies courses, we have enrollment in African American history at Hinsdale Central, and we're eliminating it. We have enrollment in East Asian Studies, and we're eliminating it. We have enrollment in Honors Philosophy, and we're eliminating it. Instead of trying to bring these courses, I mean, when we talk about students having opportunities to see themselves within curriculum, why are we eliminating African American history, East Asian Studies, and courses like that instead of expanding them by including AP African American Studies, which is rolling out by the College Board? So we're eliminating the opportunities that we're being told we need to, you know, give another honors or another history survey course. Students are going to have a survey course their freshman year. Their social studies experience for most of middle school is a survey experience. And now we're going to also have a survey experience sophomore year. We need, in my opinion, to give students an opportunity to dig deep into historical topics and have the opportunity. Dr. Covino, you said something when we were discussing COVID gaps, and I haven't forgotten it. You said, a lot of the gaps that you're seeing are not necessarily always academic gaps, but one of the gaps that you're seeing is that ability to dig in and do something hard and have perseverance and tenacity and stick with it. AP European History provides that. And I don't have any evidence to suggest that Modern World, AP Modern World is going to do that. I mean, Hinsdale Central basically has been teaching the AP Modern World History minus a few units. That's their freshman experience. Some kids go on and take that exam through self-study at the end of freshman year anyway. Why would we eliminate these rich courses in favor of unknown at this time?
So again, this is where I, I feel that there are quite a few areas that are, were thoughtfully thought through from our, our teachers and our curriculum writing team or social studies team. My, my question is, is can we give this to the academic committee to dig in and look at the few areas where there might need to be some tweaks? For example, making AP Euro the sophomore class available to sophomores. There, there's some value that's been done today. We, I don't want to throw it all away. I want to be able to utilize a good chunk of that and then expand on it in order to find that comfort zone. So with regards to Dr. Covino's information that he provided the board just before this meeting, so I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to look at it, but end of year 2023, we expect social studies to be about 57% aligned, and that's just an estimation. I'm not.
I thought that was just the two courses. Am I correct?
No, that, are you reading the blue column?
Yes, I am.
So that, that would be the entire department, based on the seven aspects of curriculum alignment that we've laid out, you know, for our studies textbooks, outcomes, okay. But I, further on in that message, because it was asked, I, I received the information from the department chairs that somewhere roughly around 70% of the new, the two new freshman courses, as well as AP Modern, are developed and complete, not complete, because 70% is not complete, at this point in time. If we were to pause today, we have about 70% of those courses already done, right? A lot of work was scheduled for the summer to continue to work on those, with those teams. So that, that would be, that would be the work, as you're suggesting a pause, that would then pause. But I would suggest that the academic committee would start early in the school year, August, September, looking at some of the questions that member Akris and the team was, couldn't point out that the team was, is, is writing about. And I, I just want to add that at this point in time, it sounds like the conversation has really only been about Euro, right? But I, so maybe there's another issue here.
No, I, I mean, I have concerns about the elimination of African American history, East Asian Studies, Philosophy Honors, and other elective courses. I think it's also important to note that when this was first presented in the fall of 21, the program team did not identify course enrollment as a problem and a lot of these other issues. So we were, again, and I challenge anybody on this board to go back and look at that presentation from October of 2021, where we voted maybe two meetings later to see the information that we were given at that time and how this evolved over time with no updates to the board or an opportunity for feedback.
Here's the four slides, two, three, four.
Yep, and it was just a list of what was happening, with not a lot, very little detail about what was broken, what was trying to be fixed, why the fence was being poured down.
So my understanding with that presentation was the curricular work was a work in progress, correct? So just so, I, I, as a community member, you don't really see everything or hear everything, just how I understand sitting here. The work in progress was not, it was not described annually post summer because it seems like the curricular work, most of it, is done over the summer, yeah? I mean, it could vary.
It depends.
Okay, so we're about 57%, but specifically with freshman courses and AP Modern World, that curricular work is about 70% complete as of today. Prior to the presentation in March, were there any updates? Okay. I asked you with regards, oh, may I finish? Thank you. May I finish? Thank you. Peggy, with regards to policy, you're working on policy, the policy committee, to kind of further define this, not to devalue the work. of further define this, not to devalue the work of our teachers and our departments, rather to provide touchpoints so the board is aware, so we don't end up in this situation again, correct?
Correct. And beyond the board, and I appreciate that point, is the community. So we've heard from community members, we've also heard from other social studies teachers, we've heard from, you know, a few, we've heard from program team that sent us an email, but we've also heard from Noah Lawrence, we've heard from John Mesbit. These teachers feel very strongly and, you know, deserve to be heard as well on this.
And, and I'd like to know how you come up with a plan on anything that every single person is going to agree to? Because that, that's essentially what you're saying then, is that we have to bring in everybody so that everyone's in agreement. And that's not going to happen on any topic.
I, I, I'd like to, can I?
Excellent.
Okay. Back to Ms. James' point about policy. I recall that in 2020, 2021, before the election, in 2020, when I noticed that the policy, I believe it's policy 640.
Correct.
Was revamped, and it made me.
Actually, it was the administrative procedure. The policy itself has not.
Deviated?
Deviated.
It didn't say to, okay, okay.
That was how the policy is interpreted, is the administrative procedure.
So just, I know where you're going, Kay.
Do you do?
I do.
We have a talk though.
I know.
Okay, I'll, we'll find out. It's gonna be a good test.
But listen, policy 640 was actually the official policy, as Kay probably remembers it. It is, is the original policy. It was retired in July, on July 23rd, 2020, as it was written as Kay. Yeah. So, so under policy committee and board docs, under policies, you can take a look at all the retired policies, and a lot of this curricular, you know, the six, so 640, 660, a lot of these policies, as probably Kay remembers them, and as Kay worked, and they worked well for the district, were retired in anticipation of strategic plan work. And the issue is, for me personally, as one board member, is, touchpoints were taken out with regards to reporting back, to, to discussing with the board what was happening, the policies that were, that replaced some of these policies with regards to curricular work and academics. While they, they satisfy legally our obligation as a district, the original policies were much more comprehensive, and they actually took into consideration our community, our students, and our employees. So there was clear direction on what the policy and what the expectation of, of the board. They don't, we don't entirely have that anymore, especially as it is with regards to curriculum and academics.
And you did, you did touch on one of the points I was going to make, and, but to further it, there was an election in 2020, 2021. I remember talking to quite a lot of people in 2020 before paperwork was to be filed for that election. I then helped with that election in 2021. And the community banded together, I believe, and elected four people from that list of 10 people whom they were being told all these things about curriculum and learning and accountability to the community. The community at that point in time, in my opinion, felt that they had had changed the direction of the board with four people being elected to grab hold again, to be able to, to listen to the community. It wasn't to beat, but then there was another election in 2023. And now more people were elected who talked about curriculum and accountability, and now we have that. And not to negate the work that has been done, so I don't want to throw, I don't want to throw this baby out with the bathwater, as another baby has already kind of been tried to be thrown out, and the bathwater. So I'd like to acknowledge the work of how it was being guided, but we need to understand what, what is broke? What are we trying to accomplish? Throughout the, the whole election, I've always, I had always asked, what is the problem we're trying to solve? So let's go, we need to go back, have a pause, and figure that out, and have the board, who's been elected by the community, and therefore that's how we get notice of how things should be going. Because then in two years, if they don't like what we do, they kick us out. So I'd like to, I'd like to back member James's, although I understand the need for total reversal too. Just to say, this is not all right, and it hasn't been all right throughout this whole process of how this whole strategic plan has been pointed, in my opinion, as one board member. Thank you.
Member James, can you repeat or articulate your motion, please, again?
Before she does, I'm just buying you time, Peggy. No, but before she does, I'm just wondering, you know, is there any credence to the possibility to both pause and reverse to make sure that no work is put forth by teachers, perhaps unnecessarily in the summer?
Right, but if we're pausing curricular work, then we are, in fact, giving direction to not work on curriculum development over the summer and giving Mr. Markey and Chair Levinthal an opportunity to work together. So I guess it's, we're saying the same thing, but by pausing it, there will be no curricular work done. So we are actually giving the social studies department direction as opposed to possibly having them still work over the summer, begin the work, and then changing in the fall.
I guess.
It is really the most respectful and considerate thing for our board to do at this moment.
I, I just want to make sure I'm thoroughly understanding.
Okay.
That our motion is to pause curricular work during the summer, which is the most, from my understanding of social systems, social studies or curricular work, because I, I think we need to be very clear.
Social studies, sorry. I'm sorry. We're, this, this item on the agenda is specifically with regards to social studies.
And it wouldn't, it would be the curriculum, the curriculum alignment that was approved, it wouldn't be.
Existing courses.
Well, I think we need to be very clear, because this is what school systems do, from my understanding, and that, you know, if you could get me up, summertime is the optimal time for curricular work. So I think we need to be extremely careful and very articulate of what we're suggesting and what we're sending as a motion right now.
I can confirm that we have well over 1,400 hours of curriculum work scheduled across the district over the course of the summer that has already begun, so.
So with this in mind, then, if this is the direction that the board chooses to take, what are the next steps? The academic committee then meets and dictates to the team what happens next and, and the direct, the future direction?
Well, immediately, we would give Assistant Superintendent Markey an opportunity to come in January 1, and Chair Levinthal will probably begin communications pretty quickly with Assistant Superintendent Markey, right? And they will begin discussing some of the work and examine what is happening, and actually asking for possibly data.
So I don't envision that.
Okay.
As, as the role, since we need to provide some direction as board that by signaling a pause, that's a signal that this particular pathway that's been proposed and is in motion is not what, you know, a majority of the board, the full board, a consensus of the board wants to see going forward. And that refining that proposal would fall, then, it would be my hope, what the academic committee needs to do, what the policy committee needs to do, is define how that's going to happen. And so that should happen with full department discussions. And while I understand, you know, Terry's point that you're never going to get everybody on board, you at least have to have, make decisions as a full department and bring those back.
So to be fair, committees can't make decisions.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the policy committee, as you define the process for curriculum, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Not the specific pathway or the specific curriculum, but the process by which, you know, we want to see this done so that it would come back to the board and then probably have its first stop, presentation at academic committee.
So the motion is to pause the social studies curriculum work and send to the academic committee for a full, for a review.
I think at this time, the motion should be to pause the social studies curriculum work pending further direction from the board.
Okay.
In fact, I move to pause the social studies curriculum work pending further review, further direction from the board. Would you like me to restate it?
Yes.
Fumbled it?
Please do.
I move to pause the social studies curriculum work pending further board direction.
So move.
Second, James. I think that was the motion.
Is this opportunity for discussion, what to, I mean, a couple of points of clarification?
Okay.
So the board will need to discuss, and maybe this is part of the previous discussion on strategic plan, a couple very high level questions. Does the board want, continue to, sorry, does the board continue to interpret goal one as having a common program of studies with common courses on both campuses? Number one, right? And if the answer is yes, right, then of course we have to do something with the freshman courses, that's, that's to be determined, but, but please understand.
Right.
That we have four different courses across the two buildings for freshman level history, right, social, social.
Regular level honors.
Regular honors, they're, they're different, four, four different courses. So that, that's number one. Number two, and it's kind of the same question, and it's the elephant in the room question, right? We just need to be clear, we have used the word sustainability in a number of presentations, and I just want to be clear that that word means that the course remains viable as a course students can enroll in and the course can run. And as this board knows, that becomes problematic when we have a number of courses that because there aren't students in them, don't run from year to year. It's already been cited tonight in this conversation that there was a philosophy course at South, it stopped running because of low enrollment or whatever. I actually don't know that history, right? But, but I, I understand that to be true. So I just wanted to be, just make sure that, to keep it front of mind, that we are talking about two very high level goal one issues with this discussion, right, that must be, come into play. And I'm not sure if our building principal also wants to speak to that issue. No, he does not, but he's going to anyway. Thank you, Dr. Hardy.
Just 20 seconds. I'd like to ask if the board would consider that the motion, it would mean that the person who made the motion, if I'm lucky enough to be listened to, amend the motion to not include the phrase curriculum work, it's too broad. And I would gently and gracefully ask the person who made the motion, the board member, forgive me, trying to talk fast, who made the motion, to amend the motion if this is going to go forward to pause goal one related curriculum work or something. There is other work happening in the social studies department, and the motion with a second on the floor right now is to pause curriculum work. And I am sitting there, I don't think that's what you meant.
Okay.
But that's the motion on the floor. And I would then leave this room and tell them, stop everything.
Okay.
And I don't think that's what you meant, and I would gracefully ask you to consider aligning the motion with what you actually mean.
Thank you, Hardy.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I was trying to communicate. And I was asking about the number of hours and that how it is so important to be extremely articulate of what we're asking, what the motion is on the floor.
Well, and also, how do we separate the question that Dr. Covino asked us about the aligned program of study? And I would hope that all seven of us want that aligned program of study. Is that something that had been worked on for a number of years to get to that point?
Uh, one, I ask Dr. Covino, please, with regards to sustainability, and we're talking about courses and enrollment, low enrollment, and, you know, cancellation or moving of students from one course to another. I've asked this before, and I asked it specifically, by building, by department, what is the rubric to determine what, what low enrollment means? Like what is the rubric to determine what course is being taken off, taken away from students in terms of removing that opportunity or option? Because when you look at the program of studies and you look at the master schedule, I do not see a clear pattern. And I know it's by campus, right? So, so the board had asked for staffing to remain flat next year, so there's only a certain number of FTEs and, and dollars in terms of staffing that is available to each campus. But I think it would be really important for the board to understand, if there is specifically a rubric, do core classes run at low enrollment? Do they take priority to electives by campus? There is not a clear understanding for me as a board member, and I would appreciate if there is a rubric for it to be shared.
So I, I agree, and I don't know necessarily that it's a rubric. I mean, certain courses are advocated for by building principals and make perfect sense. I think the number that was quoted for the philosophy and ethics course was that it was 14, and it didn't run. I, I'm not sure if I'm recalling that, but we run classes at 14 before, in fact, the prior board, and the prior board before that, and I don't think anything came before them, you know, requests are granted. So I think it's a bigger conversation, because I think we, we have to get creative about how we think about staffing. Perhaps you move away from a fixed model that can make sure that we're able to run courses at both campuses that perhaps don't meet the enrollment threshold. Because you're, you have to think that not only are you running the course for that particular year, but you're growing a program. So we had this, I think, post-COVID with a journalism course or a newspaper course at Central, and it was advocated to run it at a lower number because we were coming off of COVID, and perhaps it hadn't gained the student momentum that needed to happen because students weren't in person. But I think that's a conversation that perhaps starts at HR, but again, comes to the full board, because with the start of report, you know, that was presented, we need to be proactive in how we're thinking about getting courses to students as often as we possibly can.
So with regards to this, please, I ask, in March, staffing comes to this table for approval. So this conversation and this understanding needs to happen well before March. It cannot happen the meeting before it's presented to the board for a vote, because that's not enough time. Two, just so we, you know, have complete understanding from where I'm coming from, the staffing meeting in March indicated that in order to support student need, need for growth and proficiency, two subject areas, ELA and math, were going to run at what would be traditionally considered low enrollment. at what would be traditionally considered low enrollment for our district, meaning 18 students or less per class at South. And at Central, I think it's just mostly math that would be running at 18 students or less. So to be clear, we run classes, core classes, large bunches of classes to support student need at what we consider low enrollment.
I appreciate this whole conversation because that's like something on my radar, but it wasn't for tonight because, you know, we got other fish to fry. And I think we should get back to what Dr. Hardy had counseled us up, and I, I would like to thank him for that. Um, so can we focus on amending the motion? I don't know, I can't recall if Mr. Waters, since you were the second. Who was the second, or was that you?
I was the second.
Do you need to?
Mr. Waters was the first and Member, Member James was the second.
So I, I withdraw my second.
Okay. Dr. can you withdraw your first?
Yeah.
Yes, as we modify here, yes.
I move to pause the goal one-related curriculum work in social studies pending for future board direction.
So moved.
Second, James.
Okay, point of order here. She made the motion.
So he's seconding it.
So he's really seconding it, okay? Just because normally, Ms. Greenspan asks for a motion. Ms. Leventhal did not ask for the motion, she was doing the motion, okay? Just, so I'm just trying to keep everybody on the right face.
I second.
I, I'm out of the mix.
You're out.
Yes. Just hanging out.
Member Leventhal and Member Waters.
Deb, will you please call roll? Member James.
Aye.
Member Akris.
No.
Member Gallo.
Aye.
Member Leventhal.
Aye.
Member Walker.
Nay.
Member Waters.
Aye.
Member Greenspan.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to 5.4, schedule of board meetings. The schedule of the regular meetings of the board is required by the Open Meetings Act at the beginning of each calendar fiscal year. This schedule that is presented, uh, the agenda. Has everybody got a chance to look at it?
Yes. I just have some questions about it, can, is it time to ask questions?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'd like to color code it if this is really difficult. But in December, we're, in, in both November and December, we're only having one working board meeting. However, I believe that possibly we need to have two working board meetings in December because that is, if, if memory serves me correctly, we are getting ready for the levy. And I believe that, you know, that it would behoove this board to have, I can understand why only one in November because of how that Thursday hits. Um, so, but I would like to suggest that December 7th, but I don't know what other things are happening within the district that might be conflicted with December 7th because of holiday, holiday events, all the fun stuff that our, that our students do. So possibly, but I believe that this board, because it's a new board and it'll be the first time for some of the board members going through the budget process, the levy process, that it's very critical to have some, a third meeting within November, December timeframe, if we could think about that. And then also.
So can I just, can I address the levy really quick before you jump into the other one?
Well, the other one was the finance committee meeting for, for, um, for December also, because I know that, you know, finance needs to be really helpful with this, with the levy. So that, I was going to suggest something December 13th for finance, but I also know that there are holiday things going on, so.
So what we did last year in anticipation of levy, because we knew at the finance level, at the finance committee level, because we knew it was going to be a big, a large topic, that we wanted to make sure that the full board had an opportunity, is we moved the discussions up quite considerably where we began. Josh was able, CFO Stevenson was able to outline the process for us. I believe if I look back in October, um, so that the full board had plenty of preparation leading up to December to understand the process, learn about the recommendation, and then vote and have the levy hearing. So, and I believe that we would be looking to do that for the same way this year because we have new board members and also because the levy is very similar in nature to last year where it's going to require likely hearing, although CFO Stevenson isn't here to tell me if that's correct. Um, so I understand your concern, but I think we can address it just by moving the timeline up.
That's, that's really good to know. I just wanted to verify because it's so important.
I'll put it on our radar.
Yeah, just as, and that's, and Josh has always done a really good, um, you know, when I was on the board with him prior, so I appreciate that. Um, and then, I think that's all I have.
So with regards to your concerns, I hear you, Kay, and clearly this board is not afraid of a special meeting. So if we need the working time, we can add one in December.
But knowing that it's the holiday time too, and we're all going to be crunched.
Any more discussion? Moving on. Member Gallo, uh, to 5.5, BOE@Hinsdale86.org email address update. I asked politely if Member Gallo would work with CIO Bakwol with regards to some distribution issues or delivery issues to the distribution list of the email, BOE@Hinsdale86.org. Member Gallo, could you give us an update?
Yes, I had noticed this when I came on board that certain, um, community members' emails were not being delivered to the full board. At least I wasn't getting them in my email inbox. But there was a plethora of issues with mine, but I worked through with, with Mr. Bakwol and Mr. Juspolka and got my individual issues taken care of after a little bit of time. Uh, but then we do have at least one community member who sends board, board emails to us on a semi-regular basis that is, that doesn't get fanned out. It's delivered to our inbox, as I found out with Mr. Bakwol and his, and his wonderful tech team. Um, but it doesn't get fanned out to us. And Dr. Covino has been gracious in forwarding them to us, so it doesn't look, I, I did it one time and it kind of was confusing to me at least, and I knew it was coming. So, um, we're still working on those issues. Mr. Bakwol and I are going to be hanging out here a little bit after the meeting to do some more things, and he's gotten, um, he and his team have gotten Google on the phone. And, um, we're going to be working it out and just figuring it out. So hopefully, if anybody else notices things that maybe it's, it's coming into, how I saw it, I had these emails coming into my personal account because it's sent to the community, and they weren't being sent to the, to the full board. Uh, but I talked to that person sending it, and she was saying, no, we send it to the full board. And, um, so it hasn't been, um, they haven't been being received by the full board since January, as I've talked to other board members here. Um, so, um, so hopefully, I know that we will get this done because we've got a great tech team.
And in the interim, we do have somebody forward emails to the full board.
So of that individual, individual community member, what I ask politely, and maybe there is a media outlet that could point this, but if, if a community member or a public is trying to communicate with the board, in, until we are certain that the distribution of any email that comes into BOE@Hinsdale86.org is forwarding properly, I ask that anybody trying to communicate with the board as a group send to each individual email address until we are certain that it's working.
Because one caveat is that when you send to the BOE@Hinsdale86.org, the person sending it was receiving notification, thank you for your email, please be advised, you know, that, that acknowledgement. So that person didn't have any clue that it, it was still, it is still being received in our inbox. They are waiting for us in our, in the inbox that is the general BOE inbox, and it just hasn't been fanned out to our individual board. So they are there in the inbox, and we can tell who they.
Clarify.
We inbox.
Okay. I just think this is one anomaly that's taking place with this particular address. And I don't think it's happening all the time, just smaller ones seem to come in. It's the larger ones for whatever reason. But we are getting, we do have Google involved, and we're going to capture some screenshots, they've asked some more information, and continue working on it.
Just as a community member, just for clarification, I had problems sending to the BOE@Hinsdale86.org email address too. And we can go through the whole discussion and what we found, but there were some issues with the delivery of the email. So rather than possibly missing a community member or a public's email to the board without us knowing, without the sender knowing that we haven't received it, I just, just to make everybody aware that this could be an issue is really a responsibility that we have as the board. Was there anything else, Kay or Keith? Okay, moving on. 5.6, Director of Equity and Inclusion Discussion. Terry, would you like to start?
You know, I guess I'll say that I fully support filling the DEI position. I saw firsthand, as a member of SALT, how important and appreciated the work that this role plays in our school district. The students and teachers want to talk about these, these issues and need support in this area. The recent report that we received by Dr. Payne showed some improvement, and there's more work to do. I'd like to call the board member's attention to Dr. Payne's report, specifically page 35, where she shared some information from teachers about some of their experiences and what they learned from some of her trainings. I think it's very telling, some of the words that are listed there. And again, to me, just proves that the training and the work that, that this role would provide is very important. As a board, we have heard from parents about the challenges that some of their students have had within our district. And again, I fully support us moving forward with this role.
I need to agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Walker on that, those sentiments. And, um, you know, DEI is just an extension of what SEL had been for such a long time. And it is quite, we need this in our district, so I'm in full support of approving this.
So I'd like to, um, give a little context on this and my interactions with Dr. Payne over the past year. So I was the board liaison on SALT this year. And there was a call at the end of last year for students to be the driving force of the SALT committee for this school year. And having sat at the committee meetings, I can say that Dr. Payne accomplished that. You know, that committee is primarily made up of students. There's a very small handful of parents, an even smaller handful of administrators, and some teachers that represent the, what are considered the B teams at both schools. Um, I, I'm not going to speak to some of the, you know, particulars, but I will speak to one of the actionable items that came out of SALT was an awareness around cultural and religious holidays and celebrations that our very diverse student population observe or take part in during the school year and providing information to our staff about those holidays so that they can not only acknowledge students that they have in class, but also be aware that some of these celebrations impact a student's ability, you know, to do work. I can speak to the holidays that I know best. You know, a lot of students that celebrate Yom Kippur are not studying for an AP or Pan history test the night that Yom Kippur starts and probably need a little grace and flexibility in taking that exam. I can also say that Dr. Payne led this group with, um, so much professionalism and sincere care of the students of District 86. And she is a tremendous loss, but what would be a bigger loss for that group of students is for this work not to continue and for this role not to be filled for next year. So on that front, I'm in support. I'm also in support of the work that she did on our MTSS framework. So we have students that are not special education students that perhaps are not supported by a 504 that are struggling, some with school avoidance issues, some with mental health challenges, and some just struggling. And the MTSS framework, specifically the Excel 3 program that's in place, the Champion model, I think, has yielded, according to her report, really, really positive results. And she has been the administrative chair of those supports. So while they're implemented at the building level and there is building autonomy, in fact, the supports don't even look the same at both buildings as should, that should be, since they have different student populations, she is the district-level administrator in charge of that. And at this time in this district, I do not think that we should take that role out of play and delegate those responsibilities to somebody else considering that it would fall to our incoming Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, Jason Markey. So I think we should keep that consistent. Finally, the last thing, um, that I think is really important is Dr. Payne's commitment to belonging and to SEL work. And so our elementary students, our middle school students engage in SEL. They learn how to be a good friend. They learn how, they learn about conflict resolution and the work that goes on in our high schools and is an extension of that, of that work. Um, and I think it's an expectation, as I said when I ran, that our students of all differences across culture, religion, disability, sexual orientation, gender identification should be able to come to school and feel safe and included in a public school setting. And to that end, belongingness, SEL work, and this work, I believe, should continue under a dedicated administrator for the time being.
So I would note that the position has changed lately. It previously was the Director of Instructional Equity, and it's now the Director of Equity and Inclusion. Um, I would also note that several areas of authority of this position are not, not there anymore. So to me, there's a little bit of a concern that we're not getting another Patrice Payne, which is going to be a different skill set related to this, to this role. So, you know, there, as well as a couple of other areas that, where the job description has changed. I also noted on the MTSS supports, with some of that authority not being there, we, we are actually looking at nine FTEs for certified staff at Hinsdale-South, six at, and six support staff, as well as seven support staff at Central, four certified staff, whatever. So 11 staff members, specific to MTSS at Central, 15.4 at South. I, I had asked for some clarification around other, um, additional supports and additional staff on that. And I, I don't have, other than everybody plays a role, um, I don't have specific detail around who, you know, who is this person supporting, how does that all work? I guess was my question.
So I actually, I wasn't really clear on the name change. I actually prefer, Dr. Covino had written in answer to some questions to the board and had proposed another name change, which would be the Director of Equity Inclusion and Student Support. Not to be, though we have to be careful because we do have a director or, you know, student services, though. Okay. And I think that that more accurately reflects the work that Dr. Payne does. I'm actually also not sure why it changed away from Director of Instructional Equity. I could easily go back to that as well and prefer both of those to what it's been changed to.
So I do prefer Director of Instructional Equity as a title, as well as a job description. The job description that Dr. Payne holds right now has more teeth in terms of her work. She has enforcement mechanisms, so on and so forth. This Director of Equity Inclusion position doesn't have the same teeth.
So Dr. Covino, can you explain why the title was changed? And how, if issues come up, how they are addressed with either the teacher or whomever, there are something that needs to be addressed?
So we could start with the title. And just wanted to clarify, I did not propose a third title.
I just threw it out there.
I merely insinuated that that might more comprehensively discuss the, or describe the actual work of this director. But let's, I guess, walk backwards a few years. When this position was originally proposed and we wrote a job description, we believed we knew what the position would be. And at this point in time, two years later, as I've heard from every, almost every member at this table and from scores of community members, right, the work has been very valuable. And in this perfect sense, to alter the original two-year-old, never had the position before job description, to match the current, ongoing work of the person in this position. When we originally conceived of the role, we used the term instructional equity because we believed that that person was going to spend the vast majority of the time working with curriculum alignment teams. It became very clear very quickly with the work with SALT, with the work with MTSS, with the fact that I sat in a room with her after she started, and we talked about the three-legged stool. We had a joke about, you know, these are the three things that are going to support this position. One of them was about instructional equity, but really the others were about student support, right, and working with students and staff around professional development related to culturally responsive education, inclusion, belonging, working with all students. So the role began to change at that point in time. We were just two years delayed in even thinking about changing the role. Knowing that it was coming new, we figured we would alter the job description to match what we knew was currently working. And at that time, we also wanted to change the name to more accurately reflect what is going on with, with the position. I had no problem with student, student support being added to it. But at this point in time, I don't think that that's actually a conversation here. And we can, we can, you know, refer that back to the actual role itself in our discussions and reflections on that. As far as the fight that has been discussed, it was never the idea that this person would be a disciplinarian or an evaluator. One of the things that I thought Mr. La Patino very eloquently said when he gave us the presentation a few weeks ago about our coaching system is that all the research says you never put a coach in a position to evaluate, right? Because that coach is going to lose a lot of their ability to work with the person because of that. Dr. Payne's role, and this role moving forward, I'm sorry. Dr. Payne's role, since its inception, while we wrote in it that there could be some evaluative pieces, it has never been part of the role on purpose from the beginning, right? If that is part of what we want to do, I would caution against it because that will take away the, this director's ability to both lead professional development in an open and honest way and sometimes to confront really challenging conversations. You have a different conversation with a person when you know, as the person being conversed with, that that person's evaluating you and can potentially discipline you. So we want to separate those. We have other mechanisms for that. We have other roles. Our principals take on those roles, our assistant principals take on those roles, our I and take on, take on that type of role, or my role takes on those types of roles. So Human Resources takes on those types of roles, right? So that was a very intentional decision and one that I think is in the spirit of the position and the work that is being done now and should be done in the future.
Can I read a community member's email that we got? And we've got a lot of emails regarding this position. Yes, I would like. And I think this kind of emphasizes, but I'm happy to see that we, it seems like there's some consensus on the role of DEI. I think what's really important is, in Dr. Payne's presentation, she did bring to light that we are still not reading. So this isn't a conversation about, you know, this is a conversation about students. I want to make that very clear. This is a conversation about students and all students. And the data she shared in the report that's coming out of the state with Equity Board, we are still not at the level that we need to be at. And then we also have received in our documents, the letter coming from ISB with our ratio number. So we're still not at those attainment numbers, yes.
We're above compliance.
Are you talking about the Equity Journey Continuum report and like where we rank?
That's one.
That's the ISB report.
Yes.
So actually, so just one point of clarification, please, with regards to where we rank. We are actually ranked very high, and we are ranked very high per the state. I think we're ranked at four. Not to say there's not work to be done, not at all, not saying that. But give credit where credit is due.
If I recall, the number is 3.1, our level.
It depends on, so which, which piece? There are several different rankings, but overall, I think we're ranked four. Yeah, so we're actually ranked really well. Not to say that there's not work to be done, but give credit where credit is due because we're talking, if we're talking about Dr. Payne's work, it's two years of work in the making to get us to where we are, in terms of that ranking.
If you want me to comment on the Equity Continuum report, I can.
That's Equity. And then we also have received the letter with the risk ratio, right? So that's, those are the two evidence of that the work is needed, the work that I think it seems like we're all in collaboration. We all are in agreement that we need to continue with that. But the one community member that I appreciated, the voice of the director that catwalks through performance through the implementation of MTSS across all tiers of students is undeniable. We see the numbers. However, I cannot, this is again a community member's email. However, I cannot emphasize enough that eliminating this role will be localizing the streamlined efforts in place will create a return to status quo and will hurt all students. When we have interventions that are approached in a systematic and targeted way, all students benefit as the students who were once struggling meet the rest of their peers where they are, and then the schools can focus on future initiatives out of broader scale. So I think this really reiterated the message in terms of how important is the MTSS system, which I appreciate Dr. Payne's work, and then we want to continue in that direction.
I agree with you. I appreciate Dr. Payne's work. But just a point of clarification, MTSS is not DEI. It's not DEI work. That, MTSS is specifically for the general population, and it's specifically defined to support students that are struggling, you know. MTSS Tier One supports all students, every student in the classroom. MTSS Tier Two supports students that are failing two or more classes, and then MTSS is three or more. It's not, it's not necessarily DEI. I would be really comfortable if the district had eight persons title as MTSS, like a Director of MTSS, because that is a huge push that supports students' growth and success. I'm not against a DEI person. That's not at all it. But we're tagging the MTSS responsibilities onto the DEI person without giving them necessarily curricular or academic responsibilities. I think that's a mistake.
And just to, just to give my perspective as it relates to MTSS, that's obviously the most important, or one of the most important supports we can bring. As it relates to the legal piece, you know, not only do the rankings speak volumes, I'm unaware where they were before Dr. Payne started. And of course, they may have, you know.
It's a new continuum.
Is it a new continuum, okay. And I've done my own independent research from a legal perspective, and the district has been and still is more than in compliance with respect to anti-discrimination policies and procedures. We are more than in compliance with it. I think I'd also like to generate consideration from the new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Markey to have them collaborate with us as we're discussing some of the different possible values of the role. Because obviously, the supports are the most important thing, and as well as making sure we maintain that glowing rating we got, which I didn't know if it was top four, I thought I heard it was top three. Nonetheless, it's.
There is no ranking. There is zero ranking. Four is the scale. We got a 3.1 in student achievement, which means we have a moderate gap, which means our students with IEDs and our students that aren't white are scoring often lower than our students who are white or students who don't have IEDs. That's what it means. The data on the score report card is from 2019. It is prior to all of this.
But that was a high ranking relative to other schools. If I'm not mistaken, it was, I thought it was top three in 19.
Top three out of all the, I don't know that for a fact.
I don't think they were ranked.
No.
I think what the state, if you look at ISB's website for the Equity Journey Continuum, it describes the ranking, right? It describes the rating. And it says that 3.1 does represent some gaps, small gaps.
But I think it's beyond the gaps, right? It's also student experience and teacher experience. And again, I'm just going to call my fellow board members' attention to Dr. Payne's report, page 34, where she lists feedback from teachers. And I'll just read one of them. It says, "The description of student life for Black Indigenous people of color students were eye-opening and sad." That really bothers me to hear that that is a statement that is being made by teachers within our district. So to me, this is something that we absolutely need. We absolutely need to continue the work. And we absolutely need to have someone here who is focused on this work for the students, for the teachers, and for the district.
So I still agree with Terry, but I do want to circle back to something that Kat said, you know, about MTSS, you know, would it behoove us to have, you know, a separate Director of MTSS? And that maybe, I mean, I think the MTSS work is, I'm very passionate about. I've seen the difference that it can make for students in the buildings. However, at this time, this particular role has been delegated, that responsibility. And I don't think that this is the time, I mean, organization of the district with a school year beginning, prepping for the new school year began like three months ago. I think that it would make sense to maybe have that conversation at a different time, but perhaps leave it here for now so that we can continue with a consistent model for next school year. I did also, one of the other things, one of the other anecdotes, and I brought this up when Patrice Payne presented to us, because I don't think it's well-known, but we did offer SAT prep work for underachieving students this year. And one thing that Patrice and the Director of ELL, since language is sometimes a barrier, did was instead of just sending out an email to students that qualified for these supports, they actually personally met with these families and parents to educate them on the importance. And we can argue all day long about the, you know, merits of standardized testing, but I think Patrice even said this, well, we can't deny the fact that it does open doors for students. And we can't deny the fact that we have community members that may not understand its importance. And so that personal connection, I think, went very far. And I believe when I spoke with her, you know, that that is something that, you know, is potentially going to be used in other circumstances, and frankly, should be. Having been in a district with an advisory system that did home visits and regular reach-outs to families, we need people to be doing more of that and to be leading the charge on that, saying, hey, I've got this great idea and running with it. So I really appreciate that. But on MTSS, I understand what you're saying. I don't think this is the time to upset the apple cart on who is in charge of it. And I think we need to make sure that it goes forward and begins the year smoothly for students that are at risk.
Just pointing out that this position is a 10-month position, right? So they won't be working this summer, is that correct, Dr. Covino?
It's a 10-month position plus 20 days, 10 at the end of the year and 10 to the beginning of the year. And to be clear, this person is in charge of MTSS.
Yep.
So this is our director who is in charge of MTSS. If there's, if you want to add a person, we'd be splitting the already established responsibilities for that position.
When would this position start then, if it was approved? So officially hired is different than start date, because it's a 10-plus.
So the person would work with Mr. Markey, just like Dr. Payne works with me, to figure out which days we're going to work, which days the position works, between the end of school and July 1, and then from July 1 to the beginning of school. The contract reads that there are 10 days on each end where work is required. And that's how we operate with almost all of our 10-month directors. That is how we operate with all of our 10-month directors.
And then my only other question that I had asked, that I think you're answering that here right now, is overlap with other roles that we have for the MTSS supports and the other, other pieces of the puzzle. That you're saying this person is the lead of MTSS as a role?
Yes. I mean, we are a, we are a large organization in the same way that we also have the system principals for instruction, and we have me, and we have principals. We all work in the same direction with the same, the same goals. But yes, there are certain people who are in charge and responsibility falls with them. This person's responsibility is to coordinate the MTSS, the S in MTSS, the system.
Is there further discussion?
I just say that without rehashing the path, the district's been down these last couple of years. There was neither appropriate process for community engagement or the process itself with the first two attempts by administration to adopt, hire, and implement a different position for Equity Consultant. And this position is certainly different, but process, engagement, and buy-in, those things matter. So those ideals need to transpire, in my estimation, before this consideration. Anything else will simply foster divisiveness in our district.
Further discussion?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that we had, I thank the community for bringing up attention. We had about 20-plus emails coming in. We had community members today come and express their interest in this position. So I wanted to acknowledge their voice in terms of their advocacy for the position.
And I will just reiterate that we have heard from parents and students who have had negative experiences in our district. We cannot ignore that.
The only that I'll have, that is, I have specific policies in place that specifically address those situations.
We do, and sometimes students are afraid to bring it up. We, I heard that in SALT. Sometimes parents don't know where to go. I mean, we cannot ignore that these issues exist.
I think, I think to that point too, on these issues, we don't want to always be reactive. I think we want to be proactive to try and prevent some of the instances from happening. So I do appreciate that, that, you know, any sort of bullying, whatever we want to call it, shouldn't be tolerated. But we should also be fostering a school community that makes it less likely to happen. And I don't know the answer to that, but I. And I don't know the answer to that, but I don't think taking this position away is the answer at this time. Also, you know, I understand your point, and I think what you're referring to is the consultants that, the outside consultants that were brought in. There are no outside consultants at this time doing this work in this district. That work has fallen to Dr. Payne. And in observing her work on the CELT committee, and granted, I know this isn't about Dr. Payne because in reality, she's the least person that's about it that's going, unfortunately, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But I guess I think too, you know, if Dr. Payne wasn't moving on to another district, would we be having this conversation? And so it's my hope that the committee has, the hiring committee has found a person that it is going to follow in her footsteps because her approach and her demeanor have been, I think, really, really beneficial to students and staff.
So just for clarity, there is no action regarding getting rid of this position or anything even remotely close. So I'm sorry if there was misunderstanding. The only action with regards to this position and equity in the district is to approve the candidate that is presenting to us. There was never action to get rid of this position, ever, ever. And two, I echo Member Levithol's praise of Dr. Payne. Her disposition, in particular, and her approach to discussion, really tough discussion, was not only appropriate, it was effective for our district. I certainly hope that when the Director of Equity and Inclusion is filled, that administration and the community and this board provides the support needed to be successful for the position to effectuate change across all demographics for all students. Moving on. Item 7. To approve a one-year contract for the Director of Equity and Inclusion and salary of $112,000. Is there a motion to approve a one-year administrator's contract effective July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, with Christopher Bittix to serve as the Director of Equity and Inclusion at an annual salary of $112,000?
So move. Gallo. Oh. She, Gallo will be.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Gallo and then Walker.
I didn't hear Walker. Ready?
Yep.
Please call roll. Member James. I'm sorry, Member Akris.
Aye.
Member Gallo.
Aye.
Member Levithol?
Aye.
Member Walker?
Aye.
Member Waters?
Nay.
Member Greenspan?
Aye.
Member James? I'm going to abstain. Approve the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items consist of items, minutes, business affairs, personnel, policies, contract renewals, and administrative tasks that are routine in nature or that have been discussed with the board and are now presented for approval. Any item may be pulled from the Consent Agenda for further discussion and consideration. All items on the Consent Agenda are approved with a single motion unless removed before the roll call vote. Does any board member wish to remove an item from consent for a separate vote? May I have a motion in a second to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So. Second, Gallo.
Do we get that?
That time I didn't hear the first.
Akris. Akris and then Gallo.
Okay.
Please call roll. Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Levithol?
Aye.
Member Walker?
Aye.
Member Waters?
Aye.
Member Greenspan?
Aye.
Member James?
Aye.
Member Akris?
Aye.
With no further discussion, the June 8, 2023, is there anything anybody wants to discuss?
I think we were going to talk about adding to the agenda the opportunity for the public to make comments.
I'd actually just like to make a quick board comment.
Okay.
I would like to make a board comment. So I had an opportunity to attend the Transition Center Partners Breakfast, one of the Transition Center Exit Ceremonies, and then one of the graduations, because our graduations run at the same time our Hinsdale Central and Hinsdale South. And I wanted to thank the schools for having me, but also just to congratulate all of our graduates and encourage everybody, if you have an opportunity and are invited to an exit ceremony at the Transition Center, they're just wonderful celebrations for kids that have been in district, potentially for eight years in this district, but in our community schools for a very, very long time. So congratulations to all of our students. Moving on.
I echo Miss Levithol's comments. I was able to attend the Hinsdale South awards, senior award ceremony, and it was wonderful. It was so wonderful to see all those seniors and being so bubbly and happy, and all the presenters. It's just a great culmination to their 13 years. So thank you to the schools for providing that.
Briefly, Board Member James and I were at the Transition Center, both one of the Burr Ridge and Darien. And to say the least, and to underscore the obvious, they're doing outstanding work. It's inspirational. Hinsdale South graduation was outstanding with Board Member Walker and Board Member James. And I'm not sure if the principal, Dr. Hardy's still here, but outstanding speech by himself and several others. It was a great night, and the weather blessed us.
Just a minute. I got to.
Any further comments? I thank everybody for joining us. I wish everybody a great weekend. And with no further discussion, the June 8, 2023 Special Meeting of the Board will adjourn at 9:25 PM. Thank you.